I guess everybody's ready to start. Everybody stopped talking. That's wonderful. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for coming and welcome to this forum for the Rittner School District Board Candidates. We have with us this evening Orlando Lewis Jr. and Lisa Glover Jones. The third candidate who's running, Dawn Adams Fraser, I guess was unable to be with us this evening. I am Debbie Howard. I'm with the Metro League of Women Voters, St. Louis, and I will be moderating this meeting. League of Women Voters and the Rittner School District are cosponsoring this forum. Our timer tonight is Angie Dunlap. These are the rules for the meeting. The candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement, one minute to answer each question, have the right to speak to all questions, including those posed specifically to another candidate, have two minutes each for a closing statement. And please focus your remarks on issues, not personal things. The purpose is to present your positions, not talk about your thoughts. The audience may write questions directed to one candidate or to the group on the cards which are available. And we have Barbara Davis and Susan Fugel passing out cards. And please write questions which are of general interest, not about personal matters. The timekeepers will time, this timekeeper will time all opening statements and closing statements. The time they answer the questions to the, the one-minute question answers one. Indicate 30 seconds remaining, and then indicate time expired with a red card. So you have a 30-second warning, and then when the stop comes up, you gotta stop. The moderator will explain the procedure, introduce the candidates, read to the candidates the questions submitted by members of the audience. Retain the option to combine questions which are similar or address the same topic. Ensure that each candidate has an equal opportunity to answer questions and enforce the ground rules. Audio and video recordings may be made of this meeting. Applause and demonstrations take time and are not allowed. We provide this service as part of our mission to encourage citizens to participate in government. All candidates certified to appear on the ballot for this office have been invited to the forum. Because we do not support or oppose candidates, campaign materials may not be passed out during the meeting. We request that campaign clothing and/or buttons not be worn, and a table for them will be outside the room. We are now ready to begin. We'll start our opening remarks with Mr. Lewis, please.
All right. Good evening. Just like to say, my name is Orlando Lewis Jr. Been a parent in the Rittner School District for the past 14 years. Married with four children, going on 25 years of marriage, which we're excited about. Currently have one student in the district who's a junior that's sitting back there. And we've had three other students that have graduated thus far. So I'm just happy for this opportunity to just be here tonight and just thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
As you can see, my name is Lisa Glover Jones. I've been in the district since 2010. I have students at Hake Middle, well, an eighth grade student at Hake Middle School and a freshman at Rittner High. One of the things that I've always been very passionate about being active in the district since the time that I moved into the district. Initially started off being a part of the parent-teacher organization, part of the trust advisory committee. So I'm very passionate about trying to have a voice in the day-to-day activities to try to help support the students, as well as having a bigger picture and understanding of why we do what we do. So I appreciate having this opportunity to come before the community and share more about myself and learning more about Mr. Lewis. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with our first question from the audience. Now, I've only got four, five questions here, folks. So if you have more questions, raise your hand and get a card, okay? So that you can write them and I can read them. First question is, could you please list two or three specific ideas of interest or topics you have, you hope to address during your tenure on the school board, and why you're drawn to these areas? And if you want me to repeat the question, I will, because I stuttered a lot. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Could you please list two or three specific areas of interest or topics you hope to address during your tenure on the school board, and why you are drawn to these areas? And we'll start with Ms. Jones, please.
First and foremost, one of the areas I hope to be able to address as a board, it's important to keep in mind that I'm just one voice, and we as a board, we work together collaboratively. But I hope that we can continue to address the financial, budgetary constraints of the district, thinking of creative ways and how we can possibly generate revenue for our public education program. We have to be mindful that there's only so many ways that the school district is funded, but are there opportunities to be creative in what we're doing? Because we want to be able to create sustainable programs, as well as being able to address academic performance, and being able to address, creating an environment of addressing the whole student, meaning their academic performance, their mental health performance, and their physical health performance.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I too echo Lisa. If elected, I do realize I'm only a part of a board. But the thing that's really dear and near to my heart right now is coming up with creative ways for parent involvement. That is something that's very dear to me because we, just reading different articles, the data show that the more we can get parents involved, it helps the overall success of the student. And being a parent in the district for the last 14 years, I've been very involved with just different committees and field trip parents and et cetera, et cetera. So right now, that is what's really near and dear to my heart is the parent involvement piece, as well as just coming up, continuing to come up with creative ways of educating the student.
Thank you. Our next question. What do you believe are the biggest challenges facing our district? And what is one first step you would take to address the challenges that you see? And we'll start with Mr. Lewis, please.
Well, I think one of the biggest challenges that we face right now is getting our students in school. We do understand that in order to educate our students, they have to be here. They have to be present and accounted for. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I just believe that one of the ways to do that is to involve the parent. So many times, you know, parents were left out of a lot of the information and just kind of discredited. So I do believe that parent involvement is something that is needed and something that we need to head towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
One of the biggest challenges that I see for our district is academic performance. When we look at our district strategically over the past couple of years, or even if we look at a trend of five years, we see like one year we may come up in ELA but go down in math. Next year we'll come up in math but go down in ELA. And that stands for English Language Arts. Sorry for the acronyms. But just being mindful that having a whole plan to address both of those strategically. One of the first steps, I think, is we have to kind of step back and see, look at what have we done? And what are we missing? We hear so frequently that, well, it's common for, in school districts, if you have a large diverse population, that you're gonna see your subgroups are gonna keep your scores down. I don't want us to be in that number. I think we have to be creative in what we're doing. That may include parental involvement, that may bring, include bringing in parents, that may include being creative in how we educate the child. But we have to be willing to challenge ourselves to step outside of the box and address academics.
Thank you. Our next question. We often hear about good teachers leaving due to burnout. What do you believe we need to focus on in order to minimize teacher burnout, as well as attract great families at Rittner? We'll start with Ms. Jones, please.
One of the things I believe to address teacher burnout is, we've gotta get them in the room to find out what's going on. A lot of times, we wait until people leave to find out what the challenges were. We've gotta work on trying to create a safe-to-speak environment. Meaning like if I'm struggling or challenged and having all these problems, I gotta have somebody, even as an adult, we talked about it for the children, I gotta have somebody even as an adult that I can go to and express what's going on, what I'm feeling, why my morale is so low, and then feel like there's some type of actionable step behind that. When we talk about trying to retain and getting, capture new talent, that's gonna require creativity. Our budget only goes so far. We can only, we have a cap on what we can offer. So we have to think of alternative ways. Can we be more creative in offering more sick days? Can we be more creative in providing some type of, we call it FISH, but celebrations? You know, something to kind of make people feel they're wanted and they're welcome.
Let's see. You know, my wife and I, as I said before, we're getting ready to celebrate 25 years of marriage. And in the 25 years, we have what's called check-in. And what we do periodically is just check-in with each other, just to see how things are going. You know, sometimes it's, you know, you don't wanna get to a point where there's, when a problem happens, that's when you want to address it. So having said that, I believe periodic check-ins with the teachers. Just to find out from the teachers, you know, how are they doing? So many times, we're so involved in educating the student, that a lot of times, we forget about the teacher. With the day-to-day struggles that they have, not only in the classroom, but they're human beings, you know? They still have to go home, they still have to prepare for their own children, their husbands, and et cetera, et cetera. So I think just periodic check-ins with the teachers, just to see how they're doing.
And this is sort of related. How do you plan on continuing to attract qualified, effective teachers to the Rittner School District? Mr. Lewis?
You know, I think the way to continue to attract qualified teachers or anyone is to, regardless to what the company or whatever it is, is to present what the company is doing. Present, you know, don't sugarcoat anything or hide anything, but to point out the great things that, in this case, that the district is doing. To see if what the district is doing lines up with that individual teacher goals, their vision for what they have for themselves. I always say that people don't quit people, people don't quit companies, they quit people. So, you know, finding out what they like and dislike, and as I said before, just letting the teachers know the mission and the vision of the district. Making that foremost and important.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
I mean, I think it is important that when we're attracting teachers, we're celebrating and identifying what are the good things that we're doing in the district. And how does that align with, not only that teacher, but how does that teacher's experience align with what our mission is and what our, what we see as our future focus? When we talk about trying to attract different teachers, it may, we may have to think outside of the box. May not be right in our general neighborhood. We may have to go outside of the Missouri area. If that's what we see the need is to address what's going on specifically in our students. So just by being open and receptive to getting feedback about how we can improve in how we are retaining or capturing these individuals coming into our district.
Thank you. Next question. What is one thing you learned about Rittner? And how has that inspired your role in running for the board? Ms. Jones?
One thing that I learned about Rittner that I was not aware of, and that would be the lineage, the history behind it. Just being, having a better appreciation, understanding of, the district's been in existence for 150 years. Not a lot of school districts could say that. So what does that look like when we're talking about having those celebrations? That's a piece of celebrating. That's a piece of, you know, going beyond. When we talk about what makes us different, what sets us apart, that, that's fascinating to me. You know, that we have that type of lineage.
Mr. Lewis?
One of the things that I am most excited about, about the Rittner School District, is the Rittner School District really cares. They care about educating the student. Not the black student or the white student or the Hispanic student, but the student. You know, as I said before, being a parent in the district for the last 14 years, I've saw, I've seen a lot of changes that have taken place with the student in mind. I really and truly believe that the Rittner, Rittner as a whole have the heart of the student. They have a passion for educating the student, have a passion for preparing the student for success outside of the Rittner School District, so that they can go on and be successful and productive citizens. And that's one thing that I really, 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 really love about the district. I used to be a very critical person about the district, and once I got on the inside...
Thank you. You can finish your sentence.
And once I got involved, and you know, instead of being on the outside looking in, once I got involved and got on the inside, I saw the passion and just the heart of those educators and those administrators, and all of those that were, that are involved in educating the student every day and all day.
Thank you. Okay, we have one question here. Do you support Rittner NEA? And how do you show that support? Mr. Lewis?
Do I support Rittner NEA? Yes, yes, I do support Rittner NEA, because I believe that unions are important. And I believe that, you know, my daughter sitting here is being a teacher herself, just hearing some of the challenges. And, you know, teachers, teachers are human beings, you know? And they need to feel like they're protected, just like anyone else.
Thank you.
Yes, I support Rittner NEA. One of the things of showing actionable steps with that is being able to have that voice represented by the NEA. We try to, I try to make sure that, you know, when concerns are brought, that there's a course that they follow, a chain of commands, but also just encouraging them to continue to bring those concerns, so that we, as members of the district, board members, administrators, we can hear what those concerns are. And for them to have that collective space that they need that. When we talk about creating a safe place for teachers in the district to be able to express what's going on, what their challenges are, that's one of the ways the NEA serves and is of value for us as a district. It all works hand in hand.
Thank you. In your opinion, oh, in your opinion, what is the role of the school district in supporting our growing immigrant population? Now, Ms. Jones, please.
To me, for the school district to even think about growing and prospering, we have to be mindful of all the various populations and students that we have that will become a part of our district. If we think about general population and society, that's the way, that's the way the world is going to continue to evolve. So us learning what we need to learn, whether that's the language, whether that's how to connect with those families and parents, that's what the work that we have to do. We do it on our jobs, and most definitely, it's important to do it at the school system because we're setting that foundation. And we need to build productive citizens. So when we talk about having immigrant students come into our popular, our student, our demographics, what does that look like to help support them to get to where we need them to get to?
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Certainly. In your opinion, what is the role of the school district in supporting our growing immigrant population?
Well, the role of Rittner, which is what they're continuing to do, is to educate all students. When you talk about the immigrant population, you have to think outside of the box. You have to come up with creative ways and creative strategies to teach those whose English is not necessarily their first language. So we have to put things in place, put policies and procedures in place to be able to create an environment where even the immigrant students feel comfortable. An environment where they feel that they are safe and not, and an environment where they feel loved and heard and appreciated.
Thank you. How will you advocate for our students of color and make sure you are always being culturally responsive? Mr. Lewis?
How would I educate, how would I advocate for our student? Just to make sure that the policies and the procedures that are being put in place is not discriminatory towards our students of color. Just being their voice to make sure that we are conscious of all students, and we're conscious of the impact that things have on our students of color that we put in place with our policies and procedures.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
To expand upon what Mr. Lewis said, not in just the policies, most definitely looking at our policies from that equitable lens, but also looking at our day-to-day procedures. Are we having equitable practices that we put into place? And when I say, I know we, a lot of times, we used to kind of say equal, treat everyone equally, but it's really not necessarily equal because we're trying to create equity. Because I may start on this box, whereas another person, they may start on a box that's already higher. But, so we're not equal. We don't always start in that same place. So I think we have to look at, are we actually implementing equitable practices across the board for our students of color, families of color? What does that look like in that day-to-day? And then bringing those voices into the room to get feedback upon some of the practices that we implement.
Thank you. What is the main reason for running for the school board? And what strengths do you bring to the board? Ms. Jones?
One of the main reasons that I want to continue being a part of the board is to continue serving as a voice and an advocate for our parents and our students, as well as the staff. Some of my strengths that I have are specifically working as a collaborator in the community. My background consists of community health outreach. So most definitely have a strong understanding of working with underserved populations and providing a space, a safe space for that, their voices to come into the room and having an understanding of what that day-to-day, what some of those day-to-day challenges may be. So strengths, I think about collaborative partnerships, very strategic in trying to bring everybody in. Sometimes, too many voices. But I think that's important when we go to make decisions because we want our decisions to be informed and not just represent what my perspective was. We want to have varying perspectives so we can make strong decisions that are reflective of the collaboration.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. You want me to read?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the main reason, what is your main reason for running for the school board? And what strengths do you have to bring to the board?
Well, my main reason for running for the board is I have a passion for seeing students succeed. And as, as I've mentioned several times, as being on different boards and the knowledge that I've gained, I thought it'd be a good idea to get in on the ground floor, if you will, and get involved and being a part of the process. Not, not getting after the procedures and policies that's already been in place. But to take my knowledge and skills and experience that I've gained over the years and be a helpful voice to continue to come up with creative ways and to educate our students. Having been a father that has a student, a teacher, I get to hear it from the teacher. Having been a parent in the district, I know what it's like from a parent's standpoint. And then being involved in, with different committees and procedures, working alongside the administrators and the teachers, I also could see from that point of view as well. So I bring that to the table.
Thank you. This is the last question I have, so if you guys out there have more questions, please turn them in. How much do you know of the district, and how long have you been in the district? Mr. Lewis?
I've been in the district for, as I said many times, 14 years. And in that 14 years, just being on the outside, while I know a great deal about the district, there's still much learning that I have, that I need. And being a part of the board, I believe that I can learn so much more to be a valuable member of the community in helping the success of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
So I have been a part of the Rittner District since 2010. By no means would I say that I know everything. I'd be afraid of somebody that says they know everything. Because every day is a learning cycle, a learning process. I know of the schools that my children went to. I know of some of the partnering schools specifically, like we started at Kratts, went to Hake, now we're at the high school. So I kind of know that side of the district more than I would say that I know about, like, Rittner Middle. Do have friends of the family that, whose children go to those schools. But to say that I have a comfort level of knowing every school, I do feel confident in saying that I have a good understanding of some of the day-to-day practices that may go on at our school, because I'm one of those ones that's, okay, well, you said I can't really be up here, but I'm trying to just sit in the classroom, just, I mean, just observe, just for me, because I just kind of figure out what's going on for my child. So that piece I'm confident about in the classrooms that I have been in. So continually will want to learn and willing to learn.
Thank you. Well, I just got another question, you guys aren't off the table yet. It says, how do you feel about guns in the classroom, arming teachers? And I guess we start with Ms. Jones.
So one of the things with, about guns in the classroom, arming teachers, I'm not one to feel like violence should be solved with violence. I'm also not one to feel that teachers are experts in handling guns. So I, myself personally, that's something that I don't feel comfortable with. I prefer to leave that type of guns, handling of guns, to the experts. That's police officers, people of law enforcement nature, not so much our teachers having to take that on. I think sometimes when we stretch and put people in situations that when they're not experts about that, that can be, turn into some sticky situations, and I prefer not to do that.
Mr. Lewis?
I believe arming teachers in the classroom will not solve the problem. I believe it would create even more problems. Having said that, having so much respect for our police officers and the training, the hours and hours of training that it takes to, to be calm under pressure, knowing how to react and when to react, that's not something that you can just learn overnight. And when you are in situations, sort of like the situation that happened, like with the school shooting, you have to have a trained mind in order to be able to do that. It's more than just having a gun. You also have to know how to react when you're under pressure, when your life is on the line, knowing who to shoot, who not to shoot. And that's not training that you can just get overnight. It takes years and years and several hours of training. And I just don't think that the teachers, having to educate our students, would not have the time to get that type of training.
Thank you. It says, how will you hold fellow board members accountable for decisions when budgeting comes before student needs? Now, I just, kind of what, how should the board deal with budget versus student needs? Is basically what the question is. And we'll start with Mr. Lewis, please.
Well, currently, I work in the school district, and I'm responsible for the equipment, purchasing equipment in the district. And it always comes down to budgets and... And it always comes down to budgets and budget restraints. But the thing that I look at when purchasing equipment, and I have to use this analogy, is just because it's cheaper does not always mean it's better. So you always have to look at what's best, sometimes versus just the, from a monetary standpoint. Sometimes you have to come up with creative ways to put into play something that may cost a little bit more, but it would be beneficial to the students and the district as a large, as a whole. So anytime we allow money to be the motivator of all decisions, then sometimes students suffer as a result of that.
Ms. Jones?
I have to say, one of the things that I do in my day-to-day is all nonprofits. So it's always looking at a budget and figuring out creative ways how that we can provide the services that's needed. Kind of really similar in some ways to the budget with the school district. And most definitely, student needs, if we identify what that need is, we have to be mindful and be purposeful in when we are strategically planning, knowing that we need to set aside, because the students' needs, students are always going to have a need. So we need to strategically plan for that. Emergency savings, we need to strategically put that in there. That's something that we, conversations that we have and different ways that we hold administration accountable and like, okay, you need to go back and figure it out. We need to figure it out because the students are first, this is what their need is. When we say every student, every day first, that's what we need, we have to do.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is another question that has come, has come in. Are you ready to stand up against other board members that have had their way for oftentimes years? And we'll start with Ms. Jones, please.
Well, currently, being a part of the board, I will say that there are times where we do have challenging conversations in a very respectful manner. One of the things that I think is good for us to do as a board member is to be mindful of what are your facts? And if you can hold those conversations surrounding what are your facts, putting all the emotions to the side, that makes a huge difference in what that dialogue looks like. So am I ready to bring in facts into situations and conversations is something that I, that I'm actively doing and that I plan to continue to do.
Mr. Lewis?
Well, my family can attest that when I'm passionate about something, I'm not afraid to stand up against anyone for those things that I'm passionate about. The thing that I like, that we have to always keep in mind, that we are here to serve, not to be served. And, you know, as being a board member, we are elected officials that is put into place to serve the children. So the first question that I would ask is, is this something that benefits them or a few people? Or is it something that's going to benefit the whole entire person? And as being a board member, I just believe in serving the whole student, the whole district, and trying to come up with just creative ways of doing that.
Thank you. Since there are no more questions, I think we'll go to your closing statements. You have two minutes, and we'll start with Ms. Jones for her closing statement.
Thank you. So if I am elected to be a part of the Rittner Board, I will continue to, continue to serve as that advocate voice for the students, the families, and the staff in the district. I'll continue to be mindful of being true to trying to serve every student, addressing the academic problems, addressing our budgetary problems, and looking at the way that we do things to address the whole student. I think it's important that we truly look at what does that take? And I've said this before, that the student is kind of in the center of the triangle, we've got the school out on the outside corners, we've got the parents, and we have the community. And that's what it's going to take for us to really be able to make an impact and a difference. We all serve a role. And if we can determine or figure that out, I think we will see a lot more success amongst our students. And I'm confident that we can do that. I'm confident in our community, I'm confident in our parents, students, and our administrators and staff, that this is something that we can do. Are there ways that we can do it better? Yes. And I hope by being, having the opportunity to continue on the board, I can see, can continue to help us meet that mission.
Thank you.
If, I, I, I don't pretend to know it all. I don't pretend to have all the answers. And I know if elected, there will be a lot of learning that will take place. However, I do believe that I've gained a lot over the years, that I believe that I can be an intricate part of the policies and the procedures that are put in place. As I spoke on before, it's about the student. Not only is it about the student, it's also about the parent, it's about the community. It takes a village to raise a child, and it's going to take one to raise and educate our children. And if I'm elected, I will always keep that in mind, that we're here to serve, not to be served.
Thank you very much. All the League members here that are serving us tonight are volunteers. The League is a non-for-profit organization. To provide services such as this candidate forum, Speakers Bureau, other things that we do, it requires many volunteer hours and a sizable monetary outlay. We welcome contributions, all of which are tax deductible, so that we may continue these free services to the St. Louis community. You can make a contribution on our website or at the League table back here. Our time is almost up for the forum. I want to thank our candidates for sharing this evening with us, and thank each of you for coming to hear them. Please vote on April third for two of your candidates. There is a third person on the ballot, but these two showed up. Then there is, you can vote absentee if you won't be here on April third. And I hope that you all, and then for those who missed the meeting, this young lady here is videotaping it, and it's going to be posted on the Rittner School District website. So you can tell any family and friends that live in the district if they want to know about these two candidates, to please watch it. And thank you so much. Thank you.